Okay, I'll go over it again. At this time, I call a special council meeting for Thursday, January the fourteenth, 2016 to order. And we always, when we have, this is a special meeting, but this council always has prayer, and we always pledge allegiance to the flag. So I'm gonna open with a prayer, and then we're gonna pledge allegiance to the flag. If you would, if you want me in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you today for all your blessings, for blessing this village, for blessing this council. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of this village. And Lord, we just pray today that your blessings will wrap us up in this council, that we would diligently work hard to do what's right for the citizens of this village. And Lord, you know we are not a perfect people. Forgive us when we fail you, and be with us. We thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, well, I'm gonna set some ground rules. There'll be no public comment time. And if there's any outburst, I wanna have an orderly meeting. This is for, this council to decide and work on the two items on this agenda. If there's any outburst, I've talked to Mr. Brad Stanley here, you will be removed from the proceedings. So with that, we're gonna get started. I've got a few comments I wanna make, and then we'll get down to business. First of all, I want to apologize to the council, and to the citizens of Tobaccoville, for not showing up at that meeting on January the eighth. There was a lot of things going on in my life. I had two dear friends dying. One died Wednesday. Also, I had got a few phone calls, some emails, some letters about this ordinance number 156. I got some phone calls that were borderline threatening. I felt, and I talked to Mr. Quarter on Monday, Tuesday, I was here in the office, that what I felt like would be a safe way to handle this meeting. We had been informed, we had people coming from Greensboro, Stokes County militia, and we spent seven hundred and some thousand dollars to build this village hall. I felt like a meeting should've been held here. Nobody contacted me on this council. The last time I had correspondence with Mr. Quarter was Wednesday, at approximately 4:45, he was setting up the village hall for the meeting. I felt like we could control it, and be safe here. That's my number-one goal, is to keep this council safe. And sometimes, some of these issues can be a hot-button issue. I'm not a perfect man. And I'll have to say, when I got that email Thursday afternoon, this council meeting had been moved to the community center, it upset me highly. I thought I was gonna have a heart attack. But I am close to that situation. And on December the seventeenth, I made a decision, I was gonna step away from it, from emails I was getting, and the few phone calls I don't think I got before. But I saw social media, and I thought to myself, Billy, you better step away from this. All I was trying to do was represent those people on Whipper Will. And I'd done that to the best of my ability. But I apologize to you people for my actions. But I will say this. I did tell Mr. Elliot Fuss, our attorney, I was going to resign. I did tell Wayne Dawson I had intentions of resigning. As far as I know, that's the only people I spoke to. I think that was on Thursday.
He told me.
I don't think so. But... (laughter) The thing is, on Friday morning, I called Mr. Fuss and told him I had resented my resignation, for him to let the council members know. And I talked to Mr. Quarter on Thursday afternoon. And I apologized, and that's all there are to it. I'm the mayor, I'm gonna stay the mayor, and that's the way it's gonna be. I thank you. Okay. Now, the first thing on this agenda is a special meeting to discuss the communication of resignation by Billy W. Mccone, and an appropriate follow-up. So the first thing I'm gonna do here is, Mr. Marion, I'm gonna call on you first.
All right, thank you. On Thursday, January the seventh, 2016, Mayor Mccone contacted the village attorney to say that he had resigned as mayor. The absence of Billy Mccone at the regularly scheduled meeting in January 2016 gave the impression that he was serious, and was gonna follow through, and advised the county attorney that due to the lack of adopted procedures, or we were told by the county attorney that due to the lack of adopted procedures for resignations, the council needed to call a meeting to discuss how to handle the announcement of his resignation. On Friday, January the eighth, 2016, the attorney was contacted by Mr. Mccone that he had reconsidered his decision, and wanted to think it over this coming weekend. On Monday, January the eleventh, 2016, Mr. Mccone contacted the village attorney and reported that he had not resigned, and would continue as mayor of Tobaccoville. Having not had any direct contact with Mr. Mccone since the aforementioned events had taken place, this meeting was called to hear directly from Mr. Mccone in an effort to clarify his position publicly regarding the announcement, and to allow the council to respond in a manner consistent with North Carolina law.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
That's that, and I'd like to first ask if the attorney has any update as far as clarification about the North Carolina law with regards to his announcement, as it was told, reported to us.
Right. I really have nothing to add about the facts that you recited. I think, Mr. Mayor Protem, you were interested in me just providing some information about my opinion on the status of the law on resignations, and it was my understanding that you wanted the folks here in attendance to be able to understand that backdrop as well. So something that I've informed the council, and the mayor, and then the town staff in our recent conversations, is that the law in North Carolina about resignations is not very clear. There's not really specific laws that address the ins and outs of what makes an effective resignation, and whether you can take back a resignation. That said, even though there isn't a statute about it, you know, there's some, are some legal opinions out there. One thing that I was going by as a guideline is an article written on the subject by one of the professors at the UNC School of Government, who noted that the law isn't very fleshed out on this issue, and that it would be great if the legislature made some guidelines, so people would know where they stand better. But particularly based on that article, I think there's a couple questions, if you're analyzing whether, you know, the status of Mr. Mccone as the mayor. One is whether anything that he said about a resignation was an effective resignation. And I think that it's pretty established in the law that if you're going to make a resignation, you have to communicate it to the people who have the authority to replace you. So, you know, if the mayor were to tell his wife, "I'm gonna resign," I don't think that's really material. If he communicates it to the council, which is the body that has the authority to appoint a replacement, then that would pretty clearly be effective, perhaps not even without a written resignation, which I don't think occurred here. In this case, I think it's pretty clear that Mr. Mccone never formally addressed the whole council with any communication of a resignation. I mean, you, some people may interpret him telling Mr. Dodson something different than others, but certainly, I, you know, I'm not aware of facts that he really made an official statement of resignation to the council. The second question here is, if whatever he said was an effective resignation, can he take it back? And that's another issue where the law isn't really clear. There is some debate in the law about whether the council would need to accept that resignation or not. To date, the council has not done anything to formally say, "We have accepted your resignation." And at this time, Mr. Mccone has clarified that he's not resigning. Ultimately, you know, the law's not crystal-clear. One might be able to argue about these points. My opinion has been that, I think more likely than not, Mr. Mccone has the right to say he's still the mayor, and that either he never gave an effective resignation, or he has the right to take it back. You know, I can't point to a very clear law about that, and I'm not a judge or anything, can't make legal determinations, but that's my impression. And I think that's kind of what you're dealing with in terms of the legal backdrop for all this.
All right. Thank you for your input. At this time, I'd like to make, I guess, a personal comment of my own. This is not on behalf of anyone else, but just myself here. And after, you know, and normally, the way this, you know, works is if Billy is sick, or his husband is gonna be unavailable, he'll, you know, contact me and use me the courtesy of, you know, make up that our heads up that he's gonna be available, or unavailable, and could I, you know, cover for him at a meeting. The way this kind of came about is, you know, in such haste, I was just curious, was there other extenuating circumstances that did exist that I wasn't aware of? You know, he's mentioned in his note, or message here about the possible threats, as well as, you know, the death of, you know, close friends. So I was curious about that. So, since I had not had any direct communications from the mayor, I was, it's just other than hearsay, I wanted to call this meeting just to, you know, have those issues addressed. At this time, I felt in all fairness, I should let Billy speak on his behalf to those issues, which he has done. At this point, I was gonna have him speak to that, but he's now, you know, given his apology, and it seems sincere, and I appreciate you doing that on our behalf. And at this time, I'd like to open the discussion up to other council members who might like to say something on their behalf. I'll start with Lori, if you'd like to.
To quote an email that I recently received, it says, "As I look at the village of Tobaccoville symbol, as you see here, I see a serene nostalgic picture of rolling fields, of a little wood-framed church, and of a tobacco leaf, all reminders of a time and of a way of life that made the village of Tobaccoville great. This way of life also entails a morality and a code of ethics by which we all should live. We, as a council, agreed to adopt a code of ethics, which was basically to establish guidelines for our ethical standards, standards of conduct as elected officials. In the state motto of North Carolina, a spirit of honesty and forthrightness is reflected, and we, as public officials, are charged with upholding the trust of our citizens. With that said, the actions of Mr. Mccone have resulted in a lack of trust and leadership from a large majority of residents in our community. As I browse through the emails, the words embarrassment, frustration, anger, resentment, dishonorable, and many more jump out at me. These feelings have been communicated to me by an overwhelming majority of voters. Looking back, the sad part is, all of this could've easily been avoided. It should've been avoided, because we, as a council, are not here to spend the taxpayers' dollars by being a mediator between neighborly disputes. This, I feel, should've been obvious to the mayor's position as well. Growing up, I was taught that if you have a problem with someone, you sit down and you communicate with them to try to come to a resolution to the problem, which is what I am doing right now on behalf of the large majority of people in our community that have asked me to do so. First of all, the manner in which the ordinance was drafted was, to me, disturbing. Mr. Mccone nor Mr. Dodson contacted me to inform me of a proposed 1,000-foot firearms restriction. At no time did Mr. Mccone show any willingness to remedy the situation at hand, other than adopting an ordinance that would take away the rights of our citizens. Even after being invited by myself to go to the property site in question, to meet the property owners, who were showing compliance, respect, and were willing to discuss concerns, and even go as far as restricting their own rights on their own property to make the neighbors happy. Many have expressed concerns of conflicts of interest on the part of Mr. Mccone and/or Mr. Dodson in regards to the proposed ordinance. I have several questions for Mr. Mccone, in which I will give him the opportunity to answer in closing. According to the Code of Ethics, we are to be decision-makers, who arrive at fair and impartial determinations, to act appropriately, and to warrant the trust of our constituents. We are to be, as quoted in Section 1 of that Code of Ethics, guided by the spirit as well as the letter of the law in whatever we do. According to every single email and phone call that I have received by the residents of Tobaccoville, Mr. Mccone has shown unfair, irresponsible, and unethical behavior. I believe some of this behavior stems from not informing the entire council in regards to a 1,000-foot firearms restriction that he was trying to inflict on the residents. For that, I ask why. By being the only member of this council to be unwilling to talk to the Catlet family, which are the property owners on Griffin Road, I ask why. By being unreasonable when the majority of the council wanted to move the January the eighth meeting to the community center to accommodate the public, who had every right to attend that meeting, and who had every right to speak during public comment time if they chose to do so. Sir, you made several comments to me and to others, making it clear that you wanted to restrict the access to the public to that meeting. I feel that is wrong, and I ask why. By walking into village hall on the afternoon of January the eighth, cleaning out your office, turning in your keys to all village property, and communicating to the village clerk that you were resigning, by repeating that to a staff member, as well as to our village attorney by a phone message and a council member. By not treating other council members, staff, and the public with respect, and honoring the opinions of others, even when some council members disagreed with your opinions. We also have reports, sir, that you hung up the phone on people who tried to talk to you about the ordinance. By making the choice to avoid attending a heated meeting in which all sides would've been heard, a meeting in which the mayor is supposed to lead, displaying an act of courage when needed, this was unfair to the council, to the staff, to the neighbors on Whipper Will Lane, who came to us for help, to those in attendance, and especially to the Catlet family, because they were never given an opportunity to hear their side of the issue until that meeting. It also showed a disrespect for Councilman Dodson, as he was left, so to speak, left hanging alone on that side of the issue. And maybe this sits home a little bit more for me, because my dad honorably held position as mayor in this town. He served it for many, many years, to the best of his ability. We are, as a council, to bear our fair share of the council's workload. In this case, this council came together, whether we were in agreement or not with each other, to handle the issues at hand, which many feel that Mr. Mccone turned his back on. This entire ordeal has brought shame and humiliation to our village. We must always remember that we work for the people of this village. We should act and behave as especially responsible citizens whom others can trust and respect, and that we should be held fully accountable for our actions. That accountability may have to come by way of a vote when the time comes. I do not know of any place of business where a person has abruptly and disrespectfully resigned, and has been welcomed back in. I don't know who does that. How will Mr. Mccone's behavior be dealt with? That is in question. That, I am not certain. Do we have a public inspection, a censure, as requested by some of the residents? I've had several people ask me, what would I do if I could be the one to make the decision based on his actions of resigning, and then rescinding his resignation after the public scrutiny was over, at the most controversial meeting that has ever taken place in our village? I've heard the people cry outrage. If it were left up to me, I would leave it up to the people who voted him into office. It's not my place to judge him. I would leave it up to those people who voted him into office, and I would allow another election, to which my knowledge is probably not possible. So may this all be a reminder to get out and vote, and know who you are voting for, and with what moral and ethical values they display. Because I was asked by the people, I studied the general statutes, our charter in Tobaccoville, and common law cases, as well as the Code of Ethics. There are no statutory requirements or guidelines for resigning an elected office, such as the mayor, and there's no guidance in the Charter of Tobaccoville. And although no statute states that there must be a written resignation, usually common law will prevail. Has there been breaches in the Code of Ethics? There's little doubt in my mind. How, Mr. Mccone, will we, as a community, prevail? How could you uphold the integrity of the office that you deserted when your community needed you the most? In closing, I certainly hope that we, as a whole council, can work together for the better of our community. We need to restore honor and integrity to the village of Tobaccoville. This village and its people is very near and dear to my heart, which is why I serve all of you. I only want what is best for this village that I love. And on behalf of this village council, my sincere apologies to our residents for the division in this community.
Oh, you're good.
I would like for you to answer the questions that I have.
I'm not on trial here. I think I tried to answer that when I did my speech at the first of the meeting. My door was always open, I'm in this office, the telephone, you call me here at the village. Mr. Quarter, I'll tell you, from December the seventeenth, I've spent a lot of time here in this village. I never got one phone call from you. I haven't even talked to you since December the seventeenth. Y'all can call me. You know, it works both ways. As far as the communication between us, moving this meeting from the village hall, I never got any communications. So that's, that's my answer. So now, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dodson, with your comments.
Well, first of all, in terms of, you wanna hear what I have to say?
How about having him removed, Brad?
All right.
He don't look right here.
What, what?
He just interrupted Wayne during this conversation. Not gonna happen.
I think about everybody in this room made the same suggestion.
I've set the ground rules when we started.
I didn't say the word, sir.
You're not gonna have it.
First of all, concerning the 1,000 feet, I have an email dated December the sixteenth, from Dan Quarter, the mayor of Tobaccoville, North Carolina, and the council of Tobaccoville. And it has the draft ordinances attached to it. And you have any questions about these, please give me a call. So that information, if everybody got the emails out there December the sixteenth. But in terms of the phone conversations that I had, that applies to this situation, on January the seventh, and that was the day of the council meeting, I received a call from Dan about lunchtime. And he said he'd sent out an email about changing the location, and he was calling everybody to follow up on that. During the conversation with Dan, he said he had tried to call Billy and not been able to get in touch with him. So I called Billy after I had that communication, to be sure that he knew the meeting had been changed. And during that conversation, he did tell me I am no longer the mayor. I came to the meeting that night, and Dan, you are welcome to correct anything if this is not exactly right, or Elliot, you also, but Dan told the council that the mayor had resigned, that he had not officially accepted it, that he felt there might be a change of heart. And I left at that point, thinking that if he rescinded the resignation, that would be the end of it, or at least the door was open to change his mind. And how we got from that point to this point is a different story. If anyone has any questions, I will be more than happy to answer.
Can I make a correction, please?
Yes, yes.
I think it's that conversation was, the mayor had not told me that he had resigned.
Okay.
He had not told me to correct that.
Okay.
Just so I would make a correction.
Yes, sir.
About five minutes from time before this meeting was starting last week, Channel 12 announced that the mayor of Tobaccoville had resigned from his post. That was on the twenty of the six o'clock news before we came to meet here on Thursday night. That Mr. The mayor of Tobaccoville had decided he was gonna leave his post. That was on Channel 12 news, before we started meeting, about ten minutes before this meeting started.
I don't know where Channel 12 got that information. I, I didn't talk to them. As a matter of fact, they called me once about this situation before the, before the council meeting, and asked if I had any comment. And I told them I would prefer not to make a comment, that the meeting was open to the public, and they were welcome to attend.
Roll the tape back to Channel 12 news.
I mean, I'm not disputing that was on the news. I just, I didn't tell them that, and I don't know how it got there.
Again, Mr. Dodson.
Yes.
The fee.
Um, let's see. I had also heard on Channel 12, on, that the mayor had resigned, and I have no idea how that information got to them. When I heard that, I called the mayor, and we talked, and I said, "If you have, I hope you reconsider. I think we need you, the people voted for you, and you're the mayor." On the tenth, attorney Elliot Fuss called me, and he said, "The mayor is still the mayor." And I think what things come to my mind is, we've taken a private matter and turned it into a publical, public spectacle. And I call this a Facebook travesty. Okay? I'm not on Facebook, but I would say that a lot of this stuff that's been going on has been on Facebook, and, like I say, we've taken, taken a private matter that should've been taken care of within our ranks, and turned it into something public, which it should've never been. I was told different things. He had to have a written resignation, he had to resign to official person. I don't know if any of those things took place. So that's all I know about it.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Next thing on the agenda is the, to consider the appointment of representation at the meeting between the property owners from Whipper Will Lane, and the property owners of a parcel of land located on Griffin Road, parcel ID 6900-54-3153. Mr. Dodson, I'm gonna call on you first. Your comments on this.
Um, are we talking about asking the village attorney to be present at the meeting? Is that what this, okay.
No.
What exactly are we asking?
I guess I'll take point on that. I just wanted, I made a comment. As promised during the January seventh, 2016 council meeting, the council of Tobaccoville has agreed to help facilitate a neutral meeting between the residents of Whipper Will Lane and the property owners of the land located on Griffin Road, which is parcel ID 6900-54-3153. In order to abide by North Carolina open meeting laws, two council members can attend a meeting as liaisons without the need to call a special meeting of the council. In an attempt not to give the impression of a conflict of interest, I would like to recommend that two council members appointed to the task of liaison not have any relationship to the petitioners or be... not have any relationship to the petitioners or be listed on the petition. That is my concern, and I'd like to bring forward for discussion to see who would be the two council members that would like to volunteer to attend this meeting that been called on behalf of residents.
Okay. I have one question. Are we opening up the village any liability by being present and trying to serve as a facilitator, arbitrator type situation?
Offhand, I can't really think of a liability reason not to do it. I, I, I think there's a question about whether that's something that the village would, would normally do and consider part of its responsibilities. As a policy matter, you may not wish to, want to establish the, the council as a mediator of all private disputes within the village. That said, if the council believes that this is a special circumstance where the, the village has a special motivation to get involved, I think it, it could facilitate negotiations between these private property owners. But that, that's your policy decision to make, I think.
Yes.
Well-
You, you done, Wayne?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, my, if we decide to go ahead with this, the council member that is most neutral in this thing is Joyce McGee.
I decline.
Is that all you've got to say about it, Wayne?
Yeah. No rest, the rest of the name.
Okay, Joyce.
Okay. Okay, my, my thing is, I personally feel that no one from the village needs to be involved. The council, the administrator, no one that has anything to do with the village personally needs to be involved. I think that a mediator from Winston-Salem needs to come and sit down with both parties to, they would have a very unbiased opinion. I feel like all of us are in some way, shape, or form biased, and I don't think we could actually sit down and, and with, with either party. I think someone from Winston-Salem who is mediation specialist, I'm not a mediation specialist. I mean, I'm flattered that they think that I would listen to both sides, which I would, but I'm not a mediator. I don't have a degree in mediation. And I think that someone independent from the village needs to be involved in sitting down with both parties and figuring out what they can do to resolve the situation. I feel like if one of the council members, like myself, were involved, if something came up legally later, we could be in court fighting for one side or the other, and I really don't think we need to put ourselves in that situation.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect, that we should not mediate?
I make a motion that we should not mediate.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
I have a, a motion and a second not to mediate with the residents of Whipper Will. Any questions on the motion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Does that mean they cannot use the, the room to hold the meeting?
No.
Oh, they can use the room.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that the meeting between the, the neighbors, or it's still okay to happen here, 'cause I think it needs to happen. Do we need to mediate it now? I just wanted to clear that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second not to mediate. All in favor of the motion, respond by raising your right hand. Motion carried, there be no mediation. I guess that settles this issue, and I hope that going forward, this council can work together. I would like to ask Mr. Marion and Council Smith if they feel like they can work with this council going forward with the business we have at hand. If not, I would ask, like to ask for your resignation. Do I have a motion?
You're up there, sitting in the middle of this room, so all the motion there is there.
Have a second. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's over.
All the, you take a lot of heat. You haven't, I haven't made too many meetings, 'cause I think you're doing a great job so far. And even the issue, the way it was handled, the ordinance, okay, we got all stirred up, but very professionally handled. It's never been a billion years ago in our land and it comes with the profession of a CBA, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm really disappointed in you.